When we publish, which we expect to be a week from when this conference was held, the 26th.
Great.
So we have to make endorsements and...
Hi, I'm Erin, I'm the news editor.
Hi Erin, nice to meet you.
Hi Rita.
Hi, nice to meet you.
And I didn't introduce myself, but I'm a former sort of education reporter.
It wasn't sort of, it was just...
No, no, I mean sort of now.
Sort of former, not sort of education?
Yeah. Former, yes, sort of. So, this may not come up as much in a two-person interview, but we have you all in to make a decision, so we may not, it's not a debate exactly, we may not give you exactly equal time. We'll ask follow-ups just to clarify our decision-making process. So thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Can you each start with just maybe a two-minute or roughly introduction to who you are, how you arrived in Portland, what you do professionally? Do you want to start?
Sure. So, I am a Grant High School alumni. Today's my grant, Sweatshirt Daxxly, because I'm headed over there later.
And just say your name.
Sorry. Jamila Singleton Munson. And I grew up here in Portland, went to Gregory Heights, went to Grant High School, University of Oregon. And I moved away for a bit after college, joined Teach for America and started teaching in New York City. And so, I basically, and we're introducing ourselves and why we're ready for the board or just...
Sure, you can add that to it.
Okay. So, I think my aspiration in going into teaching always was centered in the idea that our American education system is not providing the same access to opportunities to all children. And so, when Teach for America started recruiting on my college campus, I signed up. I was very interested in the mission that all children deserve an excellent education. And so, I found myself in the classroom for nine years, two in a public school, seven in charter. And when I came back to Portland in 2011, I started to watch our public school system. And I wasn't quite involved at the time, I was an education researcher, so I was involved kind of on the outside of the spectrum of things. And as I started watching board meetings, I was very dismayed at the fighting and some of the dysfunction. And particularly around 2014, when I started watching meetings, I felt that we could do better as a group of community members stepping into board service. And I thought, rather than critiquing that, maybe there's something I could actually do to step in and help improve the way that we focus on outcomes for kids, create aspirations for excellence, set a vision. I do think what Superintendent Smith created around the milestones framework was a strong effort to start to measure excellence across the school district. And I think we need to continue to build upon that. And currently, we have a lot of room to grow with our school system. And so, having been a Grant alum, I've definitely seen the benefits of Portland Public Schools. I think we have a lot of strong community partnerships. I was a self-enhancement student and benefited from engaging in both what was happening in that grant and the opportunity to go work in a community organization. And I think we need to continue to develop those partnerships. And it's very challenging in these budget times to see a possibility of partnerships being decreased. So, I'll talk more today about my priorities. But I think my experience in education as a student here in Portland, my experience as an educator have all driven me to step into the race and bring my leadership to PPS.
Remind me, where was your first teaching job exactly?
I taught in New York City at MS 201, which was a public school in the New York Department of Education.
What neighborhood?
I was actually a teacher in the union in the A.D. And I was at, in the South Bronx in Hunts Point. It was right off of Bryant Avenue.
I don't think I was over there. I was a longtime education reporter of the New York Daily News, that's who I asked.
Yeah.
So, you mentioned in 2014, when you started watching the board meetings, like what struck you was the fighting and dysfunction. Can you be a little more specific there?
Yeah, yeah. So, as an educator for the last, I mean, at that point, I had been in education for about 13 years. And it was always a foundational value of mine that we are here to solve problems. And that means that sometimes we have to compromise, because what's most critical is that our students receive the support and services tomorrow to help them elevate. And so, you have to do that as a teacher, you have to do that as a principal. You don't get to just leave business on the table. And I saw that happening in the board meetings, where whether it was curriculum adoptions, whether that was the way that conversations happened around supporting equity, I just felt like there was a lot of arguing and not as much progress. And I think that there probably could be a little bit more efficiency in the conversations in the board. But I don't think right now that there's clarity on all of the sets of priorities that they're focusing on. And so, in those conversations, they seem to be in a lot of disagreement about what they're there to do.
Your turn to...
My turn. Okay, my name is Rita Moore. I am, I'm the parent of a PPS alum. My son graduated almost four years ago and is about to graduate college.
Congratulations.
God willing. And I come from a poor working-class family in Boston. My father never graduated high school. And I was the first to go to college. And public education was, was my ticket out of poverty, basically. Pretty much everything I have, everything I am, is because I got a great foundation in public school. And I'm running because I want to make sure that all of our kids in Portland get the same kinds of opportunities that I had. And I've been an active parent for the last roughly 15 years in PPS. And it has become painfully obvious that we have a district that is not providing equitable opportunities to all students. And that we have some really deep and pervasive systemic issues that are hurting children. And they've been, they've been known for many, many, many years. And there has been not only no real progress in addressing most of those, but no apparent interest in addressing those. So, I've been involved, you know, I started off doing the usual parent thing, you know, being in the classroom and PTA. I wasn't, I wasn't particularly good at PTA, so I gravitated to site council, which is much more kind of policy-oriented. And I started, so I started in my kid's school and then in...
Which school is that?
Winter Haven.
Winter Haven.
And then in 2005, I was the site council president at that point. And this was during the Hurricane Vicki period. And this was in southeast, there was a, one of the many facilitated conversations around K-8 reconfiguration. And in southeast, it was not only whether or not to, to switch to a K-8 model. It was also the district saying that a school had to close because of low enrollment. It was a very, it was an eye-opening experience. Went on for a very long time, I won't bore you with the details. But the upshot was, it was painfully obvious that PPS really hadn't, hadn't done its homework. And we ended up, it started off as a very contentious group of pitting school against school. And by the end of it, we were a really cohesive group and we had a, we had a consensus recommendation, which was not to go to K-8 and not to close a school. Instead of closing a school, change a boundary, change a piece of the Dunaway catchment area, which kept Llewellyn open. And we said, we predict in five years, you're going to have to undo that change, because you're about to see a huge increase in enrollment. And lo and behold, six years later, that's exactly what happened. So, I mean, that whole experience was, I mean, kind of blew my mind that PPS should have known all of this and they didn't. And that's where I really started to get involved. And since then, I've been doing enrollment issues pretty consistently since then. The last six years, I've been doing the Budget Committee. I've been deep in some weeds. And, and I'm running now because we can do better. I mean, we have to do better and we can do better.
Well, let's start...
Oh, sorry, both of them have left out one thing. What are you doing professionally now?
Yeah.
Jamila?
So, I manage a training institute, Teach for America, where we train 400 novice teachers every summer in Tulsa, Oklahoma.
And Rita, what do you do?
I just finished a long-term contract with Oregon Health Authority as a policy analyst. And I was working on a number of projects, mostly in behavioral health, integrating behavioral health and physical health. And also, I was the liaison between the healthcare system and the early learning division. And we were coming up with, trying to come up with shared metrics on child and family well-being.
So, let's talk about reforming PPS a little bit for a second. We've just experienced in the year 2016, the most astonishing failure I can recall, living in the city for 10 years, of a health crisis within the school district, a failure to disclose that health crisis, and an attempt to hide that health crisis, all of which led to the resignation of the superintendent under duress. How do we not have this happen again? Feel free to go ahead. Anyone can jump in, but let's, but let's start with you.
Yep. So, I think we have an opportunity here with new board members stepping in. We have three new seats because our incumbents are stepping down and a new superintendent. And I think that this can be a really pivotal point to create a more unified, both administrative structure within the district and a more unified and accountable board. And one of the things that challenges me about the conversation is that I think the board is as culpable for what happened as a superintendent. And I say that because our board members are a part of the accountability structure and manage a superintendent. And I do think that there's a point where the board has to be involved in situations. We know that our schools are crumbling. We know that our maintenance has shifted in the way that we've hired maintenance workers. And so, I am also really interested in increasing accountability between the school board and the superintendent.
So, what, what exactly would should a board member have done that they didn't do before that broke into the public eye?
Well, I think in some ways, I don't know everything that the board did do. And so, this is a problem that did not start yesterday or this year. I think this is probably something that has been transpiring over at least two terms of the board. So, my curiosity was where I am starting is, in what ways is the board checking in on maintenance logs? In what way is the board managing and monitoring the facility's upkeep? And I know that there's a committee that functions. And in what way is that committee creating an agenda where on a quarterly or annual basis, they're able to monitor the health and safety of our schools? And I currently don't know the answer to that question, but I would want, I mean, I imagine that's part of the board's responsibility, just like the governing board is looking at student achievement in the milestones framework. There needs to be similar accountability and monitoring of the health and safety, because again, we have lots of old school buildings and this is not going to go away. It's only going to continue to get worse.
I know that, I know it is the popular opinion out there and some, I don't know if it's popular, but it's certainly received wisdom in some quarters that the board is dysfunctional because they disagree. But I am, but I have to say, from covering Portland Public Schools, like it seems like it would have required more disagreement to bring these kind of things to light. So, I'm a little bit confused on that point. Do you want to, do you want to address my underlying, like biases there with respect to that issue of, to what extent there should be consensus and cooperation to push for accountability? Because I've heard that a couple of times in these interviews, not just you and me.
Consensus?
Or just more cohesion on the board?
Yeah. So, I think I'll clarify a couple of things. I think first, I've been disrupting the status quo for 16 years. And that started for me in college, when I was an advocate in student organizations. And so, being a disruptor is something I'm very familiar with and I'm very comfortable with and actually think it's necessary in a society where there's injustice and some people are elevated and benefited and others aren't. And so, in that, there's conflict. And conflict is healthy. And I think that when we think about a functional conflict, I think there has to still be a baseline of trust. And there has to be a baseline and a foundational set of relationships and interactions and some principles that we operate from. And I feel like that is what I believe to be missing. And what I said earlier about the fact that in conversations, it's clear that people have some very different principles that they're operating from. I think that there are some critical things that I believe about our school system. And one of them is that equity is central to our decision-making. And so, when we think about our decisions, we have to think about how these decisions are disproportionately impacting varieties of communities. And particularly, when those decisions affect people who have been historically disproportionately impacted. And that's like one example of a principle. And if we can all have a conversation as a board and agree we all believe that, then that is what we need to operate from. And I think when I watch our board convene, I don't see those types of central principles. So, that's my problem with it.
So, let's...
And I think having been a part of Teach for America, I'm very used to working with people who we don't all agree. There are plenty of things that I've seen people do in Teach for America that I don't agree with. And there are also things that I believe are true in terms of principles that we all stand for and values that we stand for. And that's why I choose to work together with them. Because we're all there, because we believe children can succeed if given the right support and resources. But it doesn't mean I always agree on all the actions. And so, I guess to go back and answer before we transition, if that's okay. Because your question was about, you believe that a level of disagreement is needed.
Well, it was needed if they were going to bring forward these issues in a way that they do not.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Right? So, I still think there's going to be a four to three vote. I don't think we're going to have a 7-0 vote all the time. Like, I think that that's, that's okay and people don't always have to agree. But I do think we need to be able to collaborate and have a level of principle in the way that we're operating.
Can I ask one more follow-up?
Let's try to, try to make sure we give somebody some time.
Can I answer your question?
I want to go back to the original question, which is, how could we have prevented this catastrophe?
What I would say is, the lead, lead in the water crisis was, was symbolic of what has been going on with PPS for the last 20 years. It just became visible. It's, it was frankly, a little disappointing to me that the lead in the water was the thing that, that did Carol in, because there had been so many other issues that were equally egregious that the general public didn't seem to be all that concerned about. And specifically around equity. You know, the K-8 reconfiguration happened 10 years ago. Thousands of children have been denied access to, not even an equitable education. They have been denied core curriculum for 10 years. So, it's a little disappointing to me that, that nobody thought that was important enough to challenge Carol's tenure. But okay. To get to the nitty-gritty, we had two audits that came out last year, prior to the lead crisis, that, that clearly spelled out the fact that the administration within PPS was completely disorganized. There was no management structure. They didn't have any, in the operations side, they didn't have anywhere near enough staff to do the work. And, and this had been going on for 20 years, 20-plus. And I would say that I agree that the board shares blame for this, because part of the remit of the board is to make sure that all of the functions of the school district have sufficient funds to do the work. And for 20-plus years, nobody has been funding maintenance, nobody. So, in, when the bottom fell out of the budget after Measure 5, the superintendent at the time, so since, since the mid-1990s, a whole series of superintendents, and we've had a few of them, made a decision to focus on using all of the resources at the classroom level. And I think in the short term, that was totally appropriate. The problem is, nobody recognized that this was the new normal funding level. And they never looked at the implications of doing that. So, it's been, you know, since the mid-1990s, all the various boards that have, have come in the interim have paid no attention to the operations side. There was no funding. So, it shouldn't come as, you know, like it's not rocket science. You've got 75-year-old buildings, eventually they're going to fall down unless you do something. So, it is, you know, I mean, this was predictable. This was completely predictable. And it speaks to, I would argue, pre, pre-this year. I think PPS has been a management mess. And it's been, there's been rudderless leadership and school boards that failed to perform due diligence and provide the oversight. That is their responsibility. So, it shouldn't surprise anybody that we had a lead in the water crisis. Last year, when they finally started paying attention, they started to paint some buildings because of the lead paint. I mean, lead in the paint is way more serious problem, lead in the water. In the space of two months, they painted more schools in two months than they have painted in the last 20 years. Yeah. That's kind of a stunner stat. So, yeah. I mean, I, I think a persistent problem within PPS has been a lack of organizational structures that work, a lack of accountability, a lack of real management. And, you know, they're much more, I mean, I'll just be blunt, they're much more concerned with the careers of adults than the lives of children.
So, let me pause for a second and ask, I think this may help us to help, we're here to make a decision about which of you to endorse. What's an issue that you disagree on? Where do you disagree with, with your opponent in this, in this race?
Well, there's one I can, one I know of. There are a number that I suspect. I do know we disagree about testing. I have to say, my opponent has not, has not been particularly forthcoming about what her policy agenda would be on the board. So, I'm not entirely clear what her positions are on a whole range of issues. But I have her...
Could you name a couple that you'd like to know more about?
Well, I'm concerned about charter schools. I'm concerned about privatization. And I'm concerned that Jamila's entire career has been working within the sort of educational reform movement with charter schools and Teach for America. And I know she has said publicly that she does not intend to bring charter schools to Portland. And, and I'm glad to hear that. But I also, I'm a political scientist. And when we look at, at people's positions and we try to analyze who's doing what and who wants what, I mean, the term of art is where you stand depends upon where you sit. You know, I've been sitting the last 15 years in committee meetings in PPS, trying to do better by kids. You know, Jamila's been sitting in, in the education reform world. So, I don't know what that means.
Ms. Singleton Munson, you want to, you want to respond to that?
So, before, can we just get to what the difference, what, what's your position on testing?
On testing?
And then we can ask her for her position on that.
Okay. I, I think standardized testing is a money suck. They're incredibly expensive, especially during times of budget cuts. But they are also expensive in terms of opportunity costs. A huge amount of time and energy and resources are spent on standardized tests, which have not proven to have any actual benefit for children. They are, just as an example, you know, we've had SATs and ACTs for, what, 40 years? Colleges and universities are increasingly making submission of those test scores voluntary, because they have found that the test scores have, have very little predictive value for how a kid's going to do in college. And what we know about standardized tests is that they are more a reflection of a family's income than they are of the skill of a teacher or what a kid knows or a kid's background or anything else. So, not a fan of testing. But can I add one thing? I do think we need to have authentic assessments. We do need to know how kids are doing. And there are ways to do that that do not require buying tests from Pearson. There's a lot of work being done in Oregon to come up with a range of assessments that would actually be usable by teachers to benefit kids.
And do you feel like as a school board member, you'll have control in some way over the tests that Portland has?
I don't know. I mean, we, we now have the ESSA, which gives states much more flexibility in what they're going to be using in terms of metrics and how they're going to be using testing. It's not entirely clear to me what Oregon is going to end up doing. But we can't, I mean, PPS does have some flexibility. You know, parents can opt out of tests. You know, we'll have to see... You know, we'll have to see what happens with, with the Trump administration. But the school board is not powerless around testing.
So I'd like, if you'd like to respond?
Yes.
Essentially, your opponent accused you of being a Trojan horse for charter schools, so...
But, wait, just-
It's okay.
Can we start, can we, can we start with like, an "and", if you wanna start there, but answer like, what you think are the differences between you and your opponent?
Absolutely. So, so I think one of the largest differences is the perspective in which we're entering into some of these decisions. And so for me, as an educator, as someone who's taught children and who is responsible for thinking about what was gonna happen to them from the first day that they walked in my door until the day that they were promoted and progressed onto the next grade level, assessment is incredibly critical for that. And I grew up in an environment where standards and standardized testing were a part of business as usual. I started in New York City Public Schools. We had state testing in 2001. And it was a part of me understanding if my students were gonna be ready to transition on to the next grade level. And so for me, I've always been invested in standardized assessment because I think that it provides teachers who are with their children and the teachers who are with children after that, a perspective on what has happened in that, for the kids.
How long did you stay in New York?
I was there for two years. Well, I was there for three total, but now, I don't think-
Early in the testing regime of New York City.
I don't think that testing is perfect. And so that is something else that I will name. But what I will say is, we continue to see a persistent gap between students who test. Everyone's taking the same test. And we change the test, and we change the test, and we continue to see some students performing better than others. Now, in the environments that I worked in, I will say, in terms of what I've been doing for the last 16 years, I've been trying to figure out ways for kids to learn more faster. And I've been trying to figure out ways for kids to catch up in their learning when they didn't receive access in their early grades. So I was always, I've always been a middle school educator. And so to me, when, when I, when we say we have a commitment to equity, but we say we don't wanna test kids, I think we really have to question, well, what, what does that, what does equity mean then? Because I, I've worked for Dr. David Connolly, who studied college or readiness. And he did an audit of several universities across the country. And he assessed what professors expect out of children when they get to college. And the reality is, there are a set of expectations that professors expect. And if we're sending our kids off to college, then our school system needs to feed our kids into college to succeed. I graduated from Grant High School, and I had to take a remedial writing class. I was in honors classes. I actually had a 4.0. And I still had to take remedial writing when I got to college because there was no standard assessment in '97 that was measuring whether or not I was ready to go on and be successful. So while I took the SAT, that was, that was it. And so I just wanna name, kind of where I'm coming from with that particular issue, and why I stand behind standardized assessment. But I will also name that SBAH has a lot of challenges and problems. Because what I said earlier about what's critical, you have to be able to use the data as a teacher. The data's coming back too late. It's not useful. It's also not useful for parents to see what's happening to their, for their children. And so I think that there's a lot of work that we actually need to do to improve SBAH. But I don't think that just opting out is a solution and it's gonna fix our, our assessment system. And what worries me about formative assessment as the only tool is it's impossible to standardize formative assessment across the school system. So we will continue to have perpetual gaps between our schools, like Roosevelt and Lincoln, if we just are using formative assessment to measure learning. Because we, it's, it's a teacher-created assessment, and teachers will still continue to assess kids on some things here and not assess other kids in these other topics in this other school. Sorry, I'm like losing my words a little bit, 'cause I'm all fired up about this. Because to me, this is central to why I got into education in the first place. It is not acceptable for us to move kids on into grade levels and then not be ready to succeed in those classes. And we have to do something about that, and I'm committed to finding a solution for that. Now, is assessment the solution? It's part of it. But the other thing that Rita and I disagree on is Measure 98. I actually believe it's critical that we put money into how we support dropout prevention. Because the reality is, all of our kids are not getting to high school with everything that they need. And if they were, we wouldn't have such a high dropout rate. And so I believe we also need to ensure that we're funding and supporting drop, both dropout prevention and ensuring that we have CTE programming for our kids who maybe aren't college-bound. Because all kids, 100% of our kids need to graduate, and 100% of them need to move on to college or careers and ready to attain in that space. I think the third thing that Rita and I don't agree on is just an overall perception about what's happening in the district. So I think the low, the low opinion of the school district is one of the biggest problems we have in Portland right now. And it's putting us in a position-
So we should have a high opinion of it?
It's putting us in a position where, because we continue to create controversy, or we continue, and I'm not saying create, but because we continue to discuss the controversy, we're actually not looking at the assets and how to develop what's working in Portland. And we cannot fix the system by just tearing things apart. We actually have to build on what's working. And right now, I think there's not a strong view on that. I think right now, we don't know what our best schools are doing. I've seen like one report about Jefferson High School's graduation rate going up because of the Middle College in partnership with SEI. Why aren't we talking more about how to improve those kind of programs in our school system to increase the success across PPS?
Well, you, you have mentioned that. Do you think that's a model that can be replicated across the school system?
I think we need to learn from it. Do I think that there are things-
Have you, have you looked at that? What do you think could be replicated across the school system?
Well, I, I don't know how I would look into it, 'cause it's, it's, I've only seen like one report on it.
So, so, I mean, before, before, anyway, Portland is a strange place when it comes to education politics, right? So, at, at least for somebody who came from New York, and I suppose you probably have followed, followed New York education politics a little bit, being with Teach for America. But, so, education reform is about disruption, about how you've described it, about pushing, the best of the advocates pushing for kids who have not had access to quality education to get better access. So something that, something that a little bit confuses me about you is that people that I think of being like board members who are pro kind of status quo in the district have endorsed you. Can you explain that? Like, to what extent do you feel like the district needs a real disruption in how we're, how we're providing education? Or how should I read the endorsements from some of the former board members who definitely supported the former superintendent?
So, I think that I might have a different perspective than you about what has happened in Portland over the past 30 years. I think that we've had a lot of disruptors-
I don't know that I have, I don't know that I have, I have a view on the last 30 years. I've only been in Portland three years and covered the school district for one.
In the present time. And so when I think about where we are, it's contextualized in the history of the city. It's contextualized in people like the Black United Front who advocated for change. It's contextualized in how our schools were closed in certain neighborhoods and disproportionately impacted. So when I think about disruptors, I think about people like Ronnie Herndon. I think about people like Joyce Harris. Those are the people who stand out to me as leaders in this community. Lakeitha Elliott. Those are people who I've talked to who have given me a perspective on what it's gonna take to push us into the future. And I think that while we are not in a great place, we're sure better off than we had were when I was here, to be honest. And I say that, I say that because our, our, our high school graduation rates have improved. And to be honest, what I grew up with in a neighborhood in northeast Portland was mass incarceration of people who looked like me. And I still have friends and family members who were impacted during that time when receiving an education for everyone did not look the same. And so now, when I look at programs like what's happening at Jefferson, and I think about the fact that historically, when I went here, that was not the story of Jefferson High School. And there was still a lot of pride in the school because of the advocates like Ronnie Herndon, who created a pride in the neighborhood. And that was the disruption that was needed at the time. Because there was this perception that certain parts of our city were, were less important than other parts of our city because of who lived in that part of the city. And so when I think about a whole school district and the way that we improve our school district, it's a school district where we have a positive perception about all populations, all demographics. And there's not this fear of a boundary change because parents don't want to send their children to school with kids who look different than them. And those are the kinds of things that I wanna disrupt. It's not just about-
Sometimes boundaries, boundary changes, you may be similar from the rhetoric of that.
It's not just about, though, what Carol Smith did and didn't do. I think it's about the whole community. And so I think that's where we might differ a little bit, is I actually wanna challenge our community to stand up for our education system in a different way, and not just a superintendent.
Because we have a limited amount of time, I wanna move on to the next question, which would be, where do each of you stand on the, on the bond? Rita?
I generally support it. I was, I was very active for the 2012 bond. And the 2012 bond was based on this 30-year plan, strategic plan, for fixing all of our schools over the course of 30 years through a series of bonds. And the plan was to have every four years, a bond put in place. So I was expecting a bond to happen in 2016, and it didn't happen. So I'm disappointed with some, some aspects of the bond. It's not perfect, but generally speaking, I, I endorse it. I do think it's, I would have liked to see some more money spent on the health and safety issues. It's troubling to me that only half of the schools will have fire suppression systems in place. But I am glad to see that part of the bond package is that every school will have lead in the water addressed, every school will have lead paint addressed, deal with radon in every school where it's an issue, and asbestos will be either contained or removed. And those are all good. Long overdue and good. I wish we could do more seismic, but we are gonna do some. I suspect we probably oughta do more roofs than are, but, I mean, that's kinda the key.
Generally, I generally support it.
Yeah, yeah.
Your position on the bond?
Yeah, I mean, I keep it pretty simple on this one. I haven't interrogated as many of the details, but I will say, I think there's a positive perception from the community that this is needed. And I think that we have a package that will address many of the safety concerns in every school. And I think that we need to support that right now. I also think we have a few of these high schools, like Lincoln, that are bursting out the seams and that need to be updated and modernized very quickly.
Good. Rachel, other questions you have?
I could keep them going for hours. But-
We have time for probably one or two more.
All right.
Yep, one, I said, and then the last question.
So you mentioned Measure 98. Jamila, do you, what's your impression about whether PPS is adequately funded?
I don't think it is. I don't think our schools in Oregon are adequately funded. It's been clear to me since high school. I remember in '96 and '97, when David Licky, who was one of my favorite teachers, was under threat of being fired because of, or laid off, laid off, because first in, first to go, because of budget cuts. Or sorry, last in, first to go. And so it's been a persistent issue. I've seen our facilities crumble. When I moved back, I was shocked at the facility upkeep. You could tell from the outside of the school that something was wrong. So, yeah.
Is there more?
Are we adequately funded? Absolutely not. Not even close. I, I mean, Jamila said that we disagree-
Oh, yeah.
About 98?
Yeah.
I, I don't disagree with 98 in principle. I mean, I, I'm a big fan of CTE. I'm a big fan of dropout prevention. My problem with 98 is that it is, it's happening in the context of gross underfunding of education in general. If 97 had passed, you know, I'd be okay with 98. But most of the people who supported 98 opposed 97. So, you know, until we're-
Except us, we oppose them both.
Okay, well, I work for 97, but anyway.
No one likes us, it's okay.
So, yeah, I mean, we are grossly underfunded. And one of the things that I would do if I were on the board, I would be rallying the troops around tax reform. I mean, we have got to change the tax system. We cannot fund essential services. And as elected officials, the school boards are uniquely positioned within PPS to, to advocate for adequate funding. And to date, they haven't done it. It's a complete mystery to me.
Thank you all for coming in. We have one last-
Before we get to the fun question, I want, I wanna give up each of you the opportunity, this is why I'll hold up to one question, to, to offer a, to offer a closing statement of why we should endorse you in this race. I wanna chat with you, Jamila.
All right. So, as I shared, I'm incredibly passionate about educational equity. And while I understand that as we get into the weeds, maybe there are disagreements amongst community members, or leaders, or my opponent, and how to get there. But I think I've proven that I'm gonna be fairly relentless to ensure that children receive a quality educational experience with the resources that we have. And that's a reality that I've had to deal with, in that I've worked in under-resourced environments, while a lot of people discuss charter schools as this like, you know, majorly funded source. At the end of the day, we still had constraints in terms of, in my school in both Los Angeles and Houston, and facilities, and resources for kids. And I've always tried to ensure that we have the best quality experience for kids, given the resources.
KIP was one of the few charter schools that actually had more funding than public schools.
When I worked in Houston, we worked in trailers in our first years. So I worked in charter school environments where we built schools. In Los Angeles, we moved school buildings three times. I physically moved the school myself. I painted walls. We fundraised to get things for our kids. So there's a different version of KIP in different parts of the country. So I do want people to know that, you know, this is my home. It will continue to be my home. My husband and I are here in North Portland. And I left for a while because I needed to see something outside of the city to help expand my own potential for leadership. And now I'm back, and I really want to be a leader for educational equity here. And so I think it's important that we pick up the pieces of this very fractured district. And we need to have people on the board who have a vision for the future and who know what it takes for kids and schools to thrive.
Thank you. Rita, closing statement?
So why should you endorse me? Is that the question?
Yeah, it is, why, that is the question. The $60,000 one, if you used to say.
PPS is in the middle of a huge transition. We're getting new superintendents who doesn't know Portland, doesn't know PPS, doesn't know Oregon, and has never been a superintendent. Everything I have heard about him is encouraging. I think he has, he has the, the experience to be the kind of real instructional leader that this district has needed for a long time. So I'm, I'm optimistic. But he is gonna have a very steep learning curve. But he is going to have a very steep learning curve. And he is walking into an ugly budget situation that I don't see getting better anytime soon. So he is going to need a school board that can help him get up to speed and as quickly as possible, can kind of give him the lay of the land and familiarize him with what's working within the district, what isn't working in the district, you know, where does this community want to go? Because the community, we have had, Lord knows, we've had community processes in the last 10 years. And there are a lot of things that we know the Portland community wants. We just haven't been able to deliver it. So, I mean, there's a lot of information to be conveyed to this new superintendent. And I think it needs to, I think he needs a school board made up of people who actually know PPS. And, you know, I've been in the trenches for the last 15 years. In addition to that, I think we need a school board that is willing to engage in, you know, frank and honest debates. And we need a commitment to transparency. We need to rebuild trust. I frankly think PPS is at a crossroads. We are either going to get this right, or in five years, things are going to look very different. I have been hearing, this year in particular, I have been hearing from parents who have been stalwart supporters of public education. I mean, they live and breathe public education, who are, who are telling me as they're crying that they can't do this to their kids anymore because the kids are not getting what they need in school. I'm hearing that more and more. We're still capturing 85% of students in Portland, and that is extraordinary for an urban school district. And I want to make sure that we keep that. I want to make sure that 10 years from now, Portland Public Schools still exists and is still capturing 85% of students and is doing better than it has been. And you don't get there by, without some really hard work. And I'm willing to do the work.
Rachel, do you want to ask? Thank you, both of you. Rachel, do you want to ask the, I don't even know what the fun question is. I don't have time.
So at the end of, at the end of endorsement interviews, we ask a question designed not around policy or our leadership approach, but just give our audiences a little sense of who you are. So this year, our question is, since it's school board races around school, what would your high school yearbook have said about you? What superlative did you or would you have gotten if you'd gotten one? Most likely to succeed, class clown. It doesn't actually have to be the most something.
Okay, I'm at a disadvantage here because Jamila is much closer to her high school graduation than I am.
Distance can provide some, you know, insights, so I'm not sure that's true.
Okay.
So I think mine would definitely be most likely to be a teacher. And that's because I have always been someone who worked with my friends on homework or spent time when I was at self-enhancement, doing my homework. I was just like pretty nerdy in my school. So I was a student athlete. I played basketball, but I also was very academic, so most likely to be a teacher.
Do you remember what your yearbook said?
I have no idea what my high school yearbook said. Back then, it was probably, Red Sox or politics. What's she going to talk about next?
Still a Sox fan?
Oh, yeah.
In fact, her website explains her interest in running for school board related to the Red Sox.
Yes, it does. And the Cubs, and the Cubs.
Oh, you're Red Sox and Cubs, and I forgot that.
Well, we're kindred spirits, you know.
It's true, they both had their curses.
I'm still waiting for the Red Sox Cubs World Series, by the way.
Just waiting for the Blazers championship, that's all I'm waiting for.
I think I'm going to see mine first.
All right. Thank you, both of you, very much for your time.
Thanks.